Send our invitation.
Sure, let us pray. Dear God, thank you so much for the opportunity to join tonight. Lord, thank you for the beautiful day that we've had, and Lord, just thank you for the rain that's been around the sky for a few days. And Lord, just thank you so much for that. God, I ask you, Lord, just be with the people that are tonight that may be sick or hurting or just going through a hard time. Lord, I ask you, Lord, just be with those people and those families. Or please continue to be with the city of Columbiana, the people that protect it and just make it go on a day-to-day basis. I ask you, Lord, just watch over their families and keep them safe and out of harm's way. God, I ask you, Lord, just be with the citizens of the city. Let it continue to grow and thrive. And I ask you, Lord, be with the meeting tonight and things discussed. Let it be for the benefit of those. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I ask you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And if I could, ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yeah.
Maazel?
Here.
Ruston?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here. And I understand that Councilman Phillips has a basketball game tonight, so he couldn't be here tonight. So again, I'll give you a couple more minutes to take a look at the agendas. Pretty standard agenda. There's not a lot on it tonight, so hopefully we'll get through this thing reasonably fast. Okay. And as always, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's approval of the minutes of, if there are none, let the record show that the minutes were approved by unanimous consent. By the way, we do have a quorum present. And we'll start off with our departmental reports. Then we'll, Chief Howard and the Fire Department.
All right. Well, um, yeah, we can see that.
It's okay to get closer.
I think you like shortening the letters, didn't you?
Somebody did. It wasn't me.
Somebody like shrink that up really small.
It's usually not my style to make it smaller.
Um, but anyway, as far as the Fire Department goes, I mean, we're rolling pretty much on board with everything. Only thing that we talked about was the budget. It appears that our budget is a little bit high, but that's due to some of our larger items already being purchased in the beginning of the year. So unfortunately, it's going to stay that way, I guess, because they were all purchased in the first quarter. So that graph will never probably come back down, but it's going to. It reflects pretty much around the budget. But by the end of the year, we should be on board with everything. Staffing, yeah, we got a couple more good employees. We've got a couple that's went through 160, and they have completed that. I've got a third one that is finishing up 160. So that's moving along good with their training. So we've got a few more good people. As far as the station, we know where we're at on that. We're waiting on growth to see where we're going. Vehicles, we pretty much, we got the new admin vehicle we've been in service this week. We've passed the others down, so everybody's probably on board with the vehicles that they'll be driving for the next year or so. So it's in service and doing well. We've still working on the AFG grant. We've got some more information on that, but we'll have to, we've got to get in before tomorrow, Thursday.
Yeah, well, it's due, the application's due Friday, but we need to hopefully get all the information. I think Brett answered all but one question that he left to you.
All but the mutual aid things. And to get the mutual aid, unfortunately, the only way to get that information is you can't really just pull it from the computer because you can't put it in that way. So I've got to go back and count all the reports for last year and pull that data out. So we'll do that manually. And we're going to try to do that tonight before tomorrow, so we'll try to have it by tomorrow. Other than that, routine maintenance on the vehicles, everything is looking good. And we've completed our EMS training for this year. Everybody's on board. They got all their certifications, finished up CPR last week. So all our training is finished up. Everything's looking good.
Any questions for the chief?
What's call volume been like?
Last year, our call volume was a little over, just our fire calls, because we don't count our EMS calls, but fire-related was three hundred and twenty something, I think, for the year.
Is that high, low, about the same?
It increases every year. I mean, that's, you know, pretty much a call a day. I mean, but again, we don't, we're not first out on EMS, and naturally EMS is the primary function of the volume department's call volume. So, but yeah, about three hundred and thirty something, I think, last year.
Well, would you still say you're getting a lot of public assist calls, though?
Public assist is, is, yeah, not as many as we were having back during the holidays. You know, we had a problem with some staffing during the holidays as far as getting people actually pick those calls up because they're always at the odd hours. But it has went down. Just don't jinx ourselves. Maybe it stayed down. But that is, that's always a problem. And it's a problem, I guess, across the nation. I mean, it's just a service that has been put in, the fire service they took on. And it seems like that we're doing the healthcare instead of firefighting, but that's what it's turned into.
You're doing. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Chief. And library?
Um, we're actually doing really good at the library. We are fully staffed, which I am thankful for. You know, our budget looks right about on target. Our traffic is good. We had an estimated nine hundred and fifty-five visitors for the month of January. That is an estimated value. That's not actual value. For the month of December, we provided thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty cents. That is down from December of 2021, but it bounced back in January where we provided forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents in services. And that is just in circulation. That is not the people coming in using computers or prints or copies. That is just from circulation. That is up from January of 2022. But everything, everything is flowing well, and it's good, so.
Jennifer, how do you define circulation?
Circulation, that is any print that goes out, any books, juvenile, young adult, adult is all separated out. We get that from Harrison Regional. We also look at non-print, which includes things like books on CD, DVDs, any of our stem kits. Those are all considered non-print.
And is there some sort of tool or something or standard that allows you to determine what the value of those services are?
There is a, a formula, which is on APLS, which is the Public Library System. They provide that on their webpage, and they do an average of what it costs for a hardback book, an adult, juvenile, young adult. So that figure is an average of what those books cost and how much circulation times that amount is where I get that number.
Okay. Any other questions for Jennifer? Thank you. Appreciate that. Dale's not here tonight. For those who don't know, he had a bout with COVID and then had a rebound, and so he's still kind of slow to recover. But basically, I talked to him about this earlier today, and there really is no change from his last couple of events. Hopefully, pretty soon, we will get some updates on, on the sewer plant refurbishment project that we've got going on. So that's about it. Any questions? I can only, I can play like the White House Press Secretary, and I'll have to refer you to the Department of Environmental Services. Yeah, it is. Okay. And Community Affairs, Senior Services?
Thanks for calling, Al. Cowboy Day is February 25th. We have a little over sixty vendors for Cowboy Day this year. We ended up turning about twenty-five away because we just don't have enough space in the park. So everything is, is ready to roll. So that is, it's going to be a fun day. Then with the senior center, we served about eleven hundred meals in January. Attendance is growing. So I think that especially when it's warmer, people are just getting out more. So that's good. Then we have, we only need meals, volunteers for Meals on Wheels for Wednesdays now. So we have all our other days covered with us. So if you know anybody who's free on Wednesday, let me know.
What about the, the meals?
Yeah, they're not great.
Need them there, maybe? I mean, you don't dictate that. That's the state dictates that, I think.
Right. That's a state contract, and those are five-year contracts. So we are approaching the third year of this contract, but they, they have been better.
Yeah.
So right now, they're not very good. So I'm not sure. They've had a lot of turnover at the commissary where they do the meals. And so I think that's a lot of the problem. I mean, like today, they sent food that didn't temp. And so, you know, we have to, like, run around and, like, figure out what we're going to do, so.
Well, y'all can do that at the senior center, but I feel bad for the people that can't get out. And, I mean, they're stuck with what they get.
Yeah. It's not great. So.
So.
I wish that we could do something about it.
I know.
What do we mean when it doesn't temp?
So we, all of our food comes already prepared for lunch. And so, you know, there's like a whole system in place about, you have to temp everything, and everything has to be safe to eat. And so if something doesn't temp, you have to replace it. So today, we had some sort of taco bake. It did not temp. And so we ended up having to replace everything with chicken, which just really just puts us in a crunch because nothing around here, like we called the pig, and they were gracious and cooked some chicken fingers really fast. But that just puts us behind because we're not. So Meals on Wheels go out later, volunteers are affected. So it's happening more than it should. M4A came today, actually. They were there when it didn't temp. And so it was good for them to see that this is becoming a problem.
So is M4A who we should talk to about this?
Yes. Yeah.
They shouldn't do the contracts that long.
I would agree with that.
So for those who don't know, that acronym, M4A, is Middle Alabama Area Agency on Aging. So it's a kind of a mouthful, so therefore, M4A is a little bit easier to say. Any other questions for, for Ally? Okay. Board reports. I guess since the last meeting, Jennifer, the last one we had was the library board. If you've got anything to add on that?
We actually have not met since December, but we do have one coming up on the 28th of February.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. All right. So we have a resolution here. This is a resolution authorizing me to sign a contract with Orchestra Partners. Orchestra Partners came and made a presentation at a work session to the City Council. They subsequently submitted a proposal for their services. That proposal is to basically, to develop, basically Orchestra Partners is a city and urban development consulting firm. And they basically have submitted a proposal to help us develop a plan for business development in our downtown and in our business district. And the plan is a, is a vision plan, is the first of it deliverable. And the second one is the development of a formation of investment funds. So that, because everything that we might plan to do and want to do to create economic development and help bring in retail and other businesses in the Columbiana is always going to require money. So one of the things that they do is they help you go out and find investors and create an investment fund to sort of provide seed money for some of that development activity. In their presentations, they have, well, when they first came to Columbiana, the first time I met with them, they were brought to us by Fifty-Eight Inc., which is the Economic Development Arm for Shelby County. And they touted the work that they had done in Jasper for some development activity there and the success of that. In their proposal, they provided us excerpts from three different opportunities or events that they've done. And one was for Jasper, one was a development plan on the riverfront in Phoenix City, Alabama, across from Columbus, Georgia. And the other was some downtown development projects in the city of Birmingham. Birmingham's kind of a different animal, so I kind of threw that out. But I did reach out to both Jasper and Phoenix City. Unfortunately, although I talked to some people at Phoenix City, I didn't really talk to the people that I wanted to. I did speak to whoever answered the phone at Phoenix City Hall, and she was familiar with Orchestra Partners and seemed to have a favorable impression. And she tried, I tried to speak to their city manager, who wasn't available. And then I reached out to their Economic Development Department and just was never able to link up with them. I did speak to Mayor David O'Meara, who's the mayor of Jasper, and he had nothing but high praise for Orchestra Partners. So I just wanted to reach out to those folks, you know, before we made a decision here to move forward and report back to you. I wish I was able to have gotten a report back from Phoenix City, but it just never happened. So.
What's happened here?
I do know. I think since the time that they, they came to present us at a work session, they have signed an agreement with the city of Gaston, too. So they're doing a big development in Gaston, I think. The plan is running away from that. So they've signed with somebody else. So that's the resolution here. We have the proposal. Basically, signing their proposal is, will be the contract. So any more discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion. We adopt Resolution 022301, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Orchestra Partners. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lilly?
Yeah.
Maazel?
Yes.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
I heard spooky, yes.
All right. So the resolution has passed, and we'll be moving forward with Orchestra Partners. So looking forward to that. By the way, there is a timeline associated with this. And basically, the, the vision plan is about, going to take about six months. And they'll be working probably concurrently, to a certain degree, with the groundwork for the fund formation. But then they look at another three to six months of getting the fund formed and the commitments for that fund. So it's a, it's a nine, potentially a nine to twelve-month project overall. And that's just for a plan. So. Okay. Is there any other business that the council would like to raise or discuss? Okay. Mayor's report. So there's a lot on here, but just real quick, on the 25th of January, since our last meeting, I did go to the Shelby County Chamber Annual Meeting, which part of that meeting was a presentation by Dr. Mellon from the University of Montevallo, who had done some surveys of businesses in Shelby County. And she presented the 2023 Business Outlook. You know, she, she had a lot of data, number crunching that she had done. And I guess the way to sum it up is like everything that, right now, as far as the economic outlook, it's mixed. Things are kind of confusing right now. That, you know, we're dealing with high inflation, rising interest rates, but we're dealing with, with low unemployment. And, and so anyways, economic signals are mixed. And that seemed to be the, the perception of those who responded to the surveys and what was the data. I've talked several meetings about the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities, and we had our workshop last month. And today, we had a follow-up virtual meeting of the action items that we took at the workshop. And I really probably need to present those. I should have done that. So I'll present those at the next council meeting as to what those major action items that came out of that, that workshop. And so we will have two more large group phone calls, but we're going to have to have, pull some people in and do some meetings and, and try to do basically the grunt work that's going to be necessary to put together this, this plan. There was some really neat ideas that came out, and there were a lot of people from across southern Shelby County, not just Columbiana, that participated in the meeting, who brought a tremendous amount to the table. And it was, their knowledge and their experience was extremely helpful, and they put some pretty, pretty good ideas on the table. So excited about the potential there. We have a new Main Street Director. That's Ashley Franco. I don't know if you were able to get a bio or anything from Ashley. Do you have any information you could share about her?
Ashley works for UAD. She is one of their development officers at UAD. She is a fundraiser. That's part of what she does for UAD. And so, what else? Ashley's been on the Main Street Awards since October. So she's a good fit.
Okay. And where does she live? She lives here, near here?
She lives on Highway 26. So they moved here last year, and Ashley volunteered to help with Liberty Day. And so she helped and then kind of just hung around and kept help benefits. So she's a hard worker. I'm excited.
Right. So we're glad to have her on board. Tomorrow, the Shelby County Mayor's Association will have its first meeting of the year. That will be at the Helena City Hall. That's always a really good information sharing opportunity where, you know, all the various mayors and the municipalities in Shelby County can share problems. And generally, we have common problems. And so it's interesting to, to share information on how those problems are resolved and how the different municipalities address them. We alluded to it when Chief Howard was talking, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, it's FEMA Grant. That application is due on Friday, and we, we hope to be able to get the funding to support the purchase of a new pumper truck for our Fire Department. We're suffering from a, an aging fleet, if you will. And eventually, some of those vehicles are getting to the point where they will be unsustainable. So we're, we're optimistic about that. The, the information to me looks great. We have gotten great letters of support from the US Senate, the US Congress, and our local legislation, Alabama Legislature and representatives there. So those things can't hurt. We are also applying for, and it's also due Friday, a grant under the Rebuild Alabama Act. It's a local transportation grant. It's to deal with street paving. We have some issues, particularly in what I refer to as our legacy neighborhoods, some of the older residential areas in Columbiana, where the streets were paved without an adequate base underneath them. And as we milled Center Street, particularly in the, in the Crown and the center, part of Center Street, just taking the, the surface layer of asphalt off took us down to bare dirt. And what we found out, too, is the, the ground is a very, there's just no base under it. It's just, it's really, really bad. And out there, very, very spongy. So hopefully, we'll get the funds to help us deal with that so that we won't have to eat all of that out of ourselves. We've, we're already on track to be over budget for our paving project as a result of that. But hopefully, this will make up the difference.
But we have a lot of happy citizens, I can tell you.
What?
We have a lot of happy citizens.
In what way?
That they got their roads paved. I've had a couple of people call me, and they were glad that they were some.
So the citizens on Center Street have a gravel road right now, sitting on top of basically red clay. So, but they'll, they'll, hopefully, they're going to end up with something that's really good. We're going to have to dig down three feet to be able to put an adequate base underneath that road. It's amazingly spongy. I, I've never seen anything like it.
But there has been good feedback.
Which one is Center Street?
It's between Thompson and.
Okay.
Good. Started saying Gibson, and I knew that wasn't right. Okay. President's Day is the 20th. That is not a city holiday. I don't think it's a school holiday here either. It is a federal holiday. I learned something today when I looked up President's Day. It's actually, the, the actual holiday is George Washington's birthday. But there, when they made it a, one of these Monday holidays, when they made the change to have all these holidays on a Monday so that you'd have a three-day weekend, for some reason after that, everybody began to call it President's Day. But the, the actual official holiday is George Washington's birthday, which I did not know. So I, I drew the arrow, if you're wondering what the reason for that blue arrow up there, to the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities, because one of the things that we would like to do is have some events, like cycling events and other various events, history trails, history tours and things like that, that would connect Columbiana and the American Village in Montevallo. And in particular, we, we felt like we needed to leverage more the Harrison Museum of George Washington. And so I do encourage everybody and encourage your friends, if you have the opportunity, pay them a visit. If not, on President's Day, do it, do it very, very soon. And then I put on there, because the folks at American Village have been so good to work with us on this REC project, they sent out an announcement to the email today on what they're planning for President's Day. And it looks like from 10:00 to 4:00 PM, they've got a lot of great things going on. I'm looking forward. I'm going to try to get out there at noon and have a piece of birthday cake with George Washington. Just not every day you get to do that. And, and at the, I was at the Shelby County Arts Council Advisory Board meeting today, and there was talk about the Patriotic Music Concert. It sounds like that's going to be pretty impressive. 22nd Shelby County Chamber Legislative Preview Luncheon, Cipelleum Civic Complex. Columbiana, as an investor in Shelby County Chamber at these various luncheons like that, gets a table for six people. I would like to extend an invitation, obviously, to the council. And, but, but to be honest with you, I'm going to ask anybody who wants to go, and we can do it on a first-come, first-served basis, call City Hall and say you'd like to go. Obviously, it's the chambers, so, you know, businesses and things like that that might be interested in it. But I'd like to go ahead and make sure we fill up our six. We, we have to get in our reservation later than the 17th of February, because if we don't fill up our table, there's usually more people wanting to come to these things than there are seats. And they will give away some of our seats at our table. But, but we've paid for it by our investment in the Shelby County Chamber. So I would certainly like to have Columbiana well represented there. February 23rd is Washington update with Congressman Gary Palmer. That's at Hoover City Hall. He does this every quarter. It's, it's very interesting. It will be interesting to see his perspective. I did get an email from him, one of these, you know, blast emails that he sends out to the world. But with, you know, the changeover in the House of Representatives, be interesting to see what he has to say about what's going to happen going forward. And I'm stealing a little bit of Ally's thunder on her next chart, but want to remind everybody about Cowboy Day on the 25th. And that's about all I've got. Any questions? Okay. Announcements?
All right. So Cowboy Day and the Cowboys Radio are on the 25th. On the February 25th, it's President's Day, and the Carl Harrison Museum, they're going to be open from 10:00 to 3:00 that day. So hopefully, everybody can go by and see them. They have a lot of good stuff. And then looking ahead, the Viewcation Board is doing their bunny tea on April 1st.
Okay. Any questions for Ally on those? This is where we open it up. Can anybody else? Anybody else?
I'd just like to thank Jeff and the Free Fire Service for doing the public assist for me two times. But thank you.
Well, we thank all of our first responders, you know. I, I'm, you know, we certainly, like, probably, like all volunteer fire departments, we have our challenges from time to time, but I think we've probably got one of the better ones in the state, if not the best. And so that reflects on the dedication of those volunteers and the leadership that we have there. And I think the same thing's true of our police department. And we're working to hopefully continue to recruit and expand the department so that we can provide those services that our citizens want and need. Any other comments from anyone?
Oh, we'll say that they had that event last night at the high school, that Hall of the Wizards deal. It was a PTO fundraiser for the middle school. So if you, if you're familiar with the Globetrotters, that was sort of equivalent of, you know, it was just another entity. But that place was packed. There weren't another seat left. And I mean, there was a tremendous amount of kids there. So, you know, I just says, you know, that, we can do events like that. It just takes a little love work. But I mean, when I say that place was packed, you couldn't fit another person in that place. There was a ton of kids there. There was a ton of kids. I think they said they sold forty, four hundred and seventy online tickets before it closed. And that's not including what was at the door. But it was a good, it was a really good event, really good event.
So Ricky was one of the stars of the team.
That's right.
He got a lot of favorable comments about his sweatpants.
That's right. Got hot and rolled up.
And Bobby Madison was, got the nickname of legend for his three-point shooting.
Play with Bobby, yeah.
So there you go. All right. Any other comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
Not sure.
So did we, did we have a, a motion from?
Yes, ma'am.